Forty thousand comic books.
Oh, hold on, wait a minute. Did you say you got forty thousand comic books, man?
Jesus. Somewhere around there.
What did you have? Where you, how you, you got them all chronic?
They're bagged and boarded, okay? Keep them protected. And they're in boxes that are like drawers, like file cabinets. But hard cardboard boxes that are drawer shaped. And you stack them up five at a time. And so you have a file cabinet. Looks like a file cabinet. And you line them along the wall and that's what you do.
Hey, what's up? What's up, everybody? You tuned into another episode of Strategic Moves. I'm your host, Ken Dow. This is a place where I bring art, culture, politics, and business all together. And I do it every Sunday right here on this channel. I've been doing politics here in Cleveland for well over twenty years. And over that time, I had an opportunity to meet a bunch of amazing people along the way. This show gives me an opportunity for me to bring these people in. We talk about some of our experiences. And hopefully, there's something that you will get out of this that will help you become better at what you do. And today's guest, I have none other than our county council president. His name is Purnell Jones. Welcome, Purnell, to our show.
Well, thank you, Ken. It's good to be here.
All right, man, we're gonna sit back. We're gonna talk a little bit about county council a little bit and you growing up. So tell everybody, Purnell Jones, what neighborhood you grew up in? Tell us a little bit about you.
Well, I grew up in the central neighborhood on East Seventy Third and Cedar Avenue. My family is originally from Baltimore, Maryland.
Okay.
Baltimore, Maryland. My father was a funeral director in Baltimore with his brother.
Okay.
And they shared the business together. But my dad wanted his own funeral home. And he didn't want to open up in competition with his brother.
Okay.
So he moved to Cleveland from Baltimore when I was five years old. Grew up on a hun- I was on Hundred Eighth and Saint Clair for about six months or so. But then we moved into the family funeral home on East Seventy Third and Cedar Avenue. I was five years old and that's where we were.
So you say you, y'all didn't want no competition. Y'all really didn't want no competition. Y'all like moving. We getting the hell away, right? We all the way to Cleveland. So let's talk about it. So you say you grew up
Okay.
in the funeral home.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, now that had to be different growing. Now, how many brothers and sisters you got?
I have one brother, Michael. He's about five years younger than me.
Okay, so it was you and your brother growing up?
Me and my brother. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
You, your brother, your mom, and your dad.
And my dad, yeah.
Now, was your mom part of the business also, or?
You know, everybody's part of the business. When you live upstairs and that phone rings, you gotta pick it up.
Right.
And I went to Giddings Elementary School around the corner. And you're right, it is different. Don't know that as a kid. In fact, I remember one experience where I was coming back from school, like maybe the first grade or something. And I turned up the steps to go into the funeral home while my friends that I was walking with, they kept on going down the street. And they looked up and looked back and saw that I wasn't still with them. And I gone up the steps. They said, Purnell, where you going? I said, I'm going home. They said, that's a funeral home. You live in a funeral home? I say, yeah. They were, ew, Purnell lives in a funeral home. It was all over this class the next day. And you know, they asked me a bunch of questions. I did the best I could to answer them. And then they let it go after that.
I would like to believe, growing up, you didn't have no issues with that, really?
I didn't have any issues with it, you know, but, but it was always in the air and, you know, friends were always asking about it. It was just, I mean, it's, it's different for, for everybody. It's an experience, you know, for me, it was home.
Really?
It was home.
A- a- as a kid, you never had an experience where you got just like scared about that? It's just, it was not normal with you guys, huh?
No, no, I was never scared. No, there wasn't, wasn't, you know, there's too many living people that could hurt you before, you know, a deceased person, you know?
I never think of it that way.
And again, being upstairs, a, a typical day, we'd have dinner. After dinner, it was always known dad was gonna go downstairs to do the work, the embalming work. And you stay upstairs, kids, when dad's going down to work.
Right.
And, you know, being a kid, I wanna know what my daddy is doing. I one day, in defiance to my parents, I snuck down and, and watched, peeked through the door to see what my dad was doing. And he was doing the, the embalming work. His assistant was there with him. And I peeked around the corner and, and looked in and saw him doing that work. And, and the assistant looked down and saw me and he tapped Mr. Jones and said, Mr. Jones, your, your son is down there. Dad looked over his shoulder and, and, and he looked back. Well, if the boy gonna look, let him stay there and look, you know? So it wasn't scary. It was more, hey, I wanna know what my dad is doing. And I got to see. And after that, you know, he kept moving on.
Wow. You know, because I remember the first time I met you there, you told me to come on over to the funeral home to meet you. And I was like, man, he gonna make me walk through this damn funeral home. You know, and I remember, and sure enough, when I walked in, there was somebody here parked over there. So I was like, oh, God, Purnell got me walked in. Oh, okay. I, I, that's just my pet peeve, man. I've just always been that kind of one.
My wife said the same thing, you know? She got over it.
She, she got over it. I know, that's right. So in that business, though, let's talk a little bit about the business, cuz that is different. Cuz an embalmer is just different. That's a whole nother element to that. And that's something you gotta go to college, I imagine, and get degrees or something in to know how to do that, correct?
Right. There are two licenses, the embalming license and the funeral directing license.
Okay.
You have to go to college first. It doesn't matter what your degree is in, but a four-year bachelor's degree. And two years apprenticeship at a funeral home, training, uh, learning under the master and you are the apprentice. But after two years, you get the funeral director's license. The embalmer's license is similar, four-year degree, one year of embalming school, and one year apprenticeship at a funeral home. And with that, then you get the embalming license.
Wow, okay. And right now, you have an embalming license or are you a funeral director?
I have the funeral directing license, but not the embalming license. When I graduated college and came to work with dad, back home to work with him, uh, he wanted me to go to Pittsburgh or Cincinnati. Those are two closest to Cleveland. But that meant I would have had to leave and stay there for a year, whichever one I went to. And I was like, dad, I don't wanna go back to school. I just got out of college. I wanna, you know, make, make some money and, you know? I'll go later. And when you do that later, it never comes.
So what college did you go to?
I went to University of Maryland, College Park. So I, I was literally back in, in Maryland for college.
And when you was going back to college, I imagine you were in that business. But you wasn't trying to go into the business, or were you, or you was thinking, I wanna do something different?
Like, you know, here's the thing, the wisdom of my dad.
Okay.
All these years, all those years, he didn't map my life out for me and say, you're gonna be a funeral director. He never talked about it. Never said anything. I was in college. I went in college for engineering.
Okay.
I was, uh, yeah, engineer. Uh, and I became a business management major.
Okay.
I decided I wanted to go into business for myself in some way. Wasn't thinking about the funeral home, but I wanted to be in the world of business. And what happened? It was my last year of college, and there was a career day. All of the companies were coming to the campus and we're gonna meet with them. And probably military recruiters are gonna be there. And you're gonna learn, you know, what was out there for you. Well, I told my dad that Sunday night, I said, dad, you know, there's gonna be a career day Friday night. And I'm going to, to go and, and see what's out there. So dad took that moment, the first time in my entire life, to invite me to join the family business. It was crazy. He said, well, Purnell, why don't you, he called me PJ, he said, well, PJ, why don't you consider joining the family business? He said, you, you know, we have escort cars. We have the light to escort the, you know, through the procession. I wanna give you one of those as your personal car, your personal car. And you just take the light off and you can use it, you know, and you don't have to pay for a car. And we own a house right across the street from the funeral home. We'll, you know, so you don't have to move back into the house. You can have your own house right across the street and you'll be right near the funeral home. You don't have to pay any rent or anything like that. And you'll get a paycheck. I thought about that. And I said, well, let me think about it. And, and as I was thinking about it, I said, where am I gonna get a better deal than that?
Right.
House, car, and a paycheck already? I said, I'm gonna try. If I don't like it, I'll stay long to get my license, add two years, get the license. And I'll go and do whatever I'm big enough, bad enough to do.
Right.
You know, so that next morning, I woke up for the career day, my roommate went. I said, nah, I'm not even gonna go. I stayed right in, stayed there in the bed, you know? I did it. And I came back to the family business. Thirty days in, I realized I loved it.
Really?
And never looked back. Yep, this was back in the nineties when I joined the business and never looked back.
Gonna talk a little bit about the business, but I wanna roll through just a couple of things because I want people to understand who you are. Now, you say you're married and got kids?
Yes. My wife, Tammy, been married since nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years.
Kids, no kids yet.
Okay. Well, that's cool. Your wife, she works with the business, or?
She is a part of the business. She's also a licensed minister.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What church you guys go to?
We go to Saint Timothy Missionary Baptist Church located at seventy-one oh one Carnegie Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Now, this is why I wanted to talk to you, cuz I wore this jacket in tribute to you today because I know that you are a great big comic Marvel fan and you've been collecting comics for years. My kids actually said they're going to see Black Panther tonight. Yeah, they said they're going to see the Black Panther tonight and everything. So let's talk to us about this comic thing. Yeah, I'm gonna put you out there and let everybody know something. Something y'all didn't know about Purnell that I know, something I know. Now, it's kind, how long you been collecting comics?
I have been collecting comics since I was five years old.
Wow.
It, it started off with a TV show. If you remember back for those old enough, there was a Super Friends cartoon.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Well, one day, we were driving, mom was driving us by like a Seven Eleven or something. And we went into the store. And there was this turnstile of, of comic books. And I saw Super Friends comic book, just like the TV show. I said, oh, I want that. And mom bought it for me. And, you know, I'm five, I barely know how to read. She read it to me when I was at home.
Okay.
That was my first comic book. I loved it. I just loved everything about comic books. Superman was my favorite character. And from then on, I was buying them. I saved them. I kept every one I ever had. I still have that one. It's probably worth about three dollars. But it's a sentimental value to it of all the ones I have. And I've just been reading them ever since.
How big you ever got your collections to?
Oh, man, I probably got, I have forty thousand comic books.
Oh, hold on, wait a minute. Did you say you got forty thousand comic books, man?
Yes.
Jesus.
Somewhere around there.
What did you have? Where you, how you, you got them all chronic?
They're bagged and boarded, okay? Keep them protected. And they're in boxes that are like drawers, like file cabinets. But car, hard cardboard boxes that are drawer shaped.
Okay.
You stack them up five at a time. And so you have a file cabinet. So it looks like a file cabinet. And you line them along the wall and, you know, and, and that's what you do.
You gotta have a kid, man. Oh, no books. Let me, let me ask you about this, Dan. Uh, what's your favorite out of all of them, you know? I, I know you're talking about that first one. I know it has sentimental. But as you grew older, I know with comics, with forty thousand, that means you did a lot of reading. You've been following a lot of characters.
Yeah.
So at forty thousand, which ones, who, who intrigued you? What was the ones you'd be like, oh, I'll never get rid of this?
Just talk about a few. The Superman was my favorite.
Okay.
From the start. But I've, I've loved the Fantastic Four.
That's DC though, right?
That is Marvel. Well, Superman is DC.
Right.
Fantastic Four is Marvel.
Okay.
I've enjoyed the X, I read X-Men. Justice League, okay? In fact, a lot of the movies, they base them on some of the best stories in comic books. So the Avengers, okay? So those books are, I think it's just like, when you read a Gresham novel, if you're reading one of those books, turn the book into a movie cuz the book was so great, let's make a movie out of it. I think the world, or the, uh, movie industry caught on to the fact that there were incredible stories written in comic books. And they said, let's just put them on the big screen. And they had bought those two, DC and Marvel are owned by the movie studios. And they literally are mining their library of books and putting some of the best stories in comic books on the big screen.
Are you happy with what Marvel did with Avengers based off of the storylines and everything? Do you think they pretty accurate with what they're doing?
They are. They take license and, and, but they stick to the spirit of the story. They do. But they, they take their own artistic twist to them. And it's enjoyable for a comic book fan as well as a casual watcher of the movie. And they, they serve both audiences well. In fact, I think if you don't appeal to the comic book artist, you're probably not gonna appeal, comic book reader, you're not gonna appeal to the average fan as well. So they, I think they've done a great job through most of the majority of the movies. They made a few flops, you know? I think that first Hawk was, Incredible Hawk was a flop, there's a few others. But Iron Man was great.
I liked all the Ironmans. I, I really do. And, and, well, speaking of that, I was texting you the other day. You saw that. Now, I text you once cuz I saw some. I said, well, maybe this fake. But then I saw another one where they said they are coming out with another Iron Man. It looks like.
It looks like it.
Yeah, and that one looked, that one looked really legit. Now, that one looked legit. And, and who was in that one? I can't remember. But that one, the first one they had, it looked like it was Tom Cruise. That one looked like it was fake. But this one, I think, looked like they were really trying to think about bringing another one in. I ju- I just not good with that kind. And I'm gonna ask you this because Black Panther is coming out.
Yes.
And it appears from the trailers that it might be a, a female that's gonna take over the Black Panthers. How do you feel about that?
Well, that's what happened in the comic books. The, the female Black Panther in the comic books. So it actually sticks to, you know?
It sticks to, so in the comic books, Chachala, I guess?
Chachala is, is Black Panther we know.
Right. So he ended up dying or something in the comic books?
I would say through the history of the comic, of the comic book, uh, or of the Black Panther.
Okay.
There's been generations of Black Panthers.
Really?
So there's always been a change.
Yeah, that's right. Because when we started off, his father died. Correct, correct.
Was the Black Panther.
Okay.
Right. And there were others, you know, throughout the generations. So it was so sad to see for the loss of Chad Bull. It was an incredible loss. In, in the comic books, it, it plays out. It just is another Black Panther. So I, I haven't seen the movie yet. I plan on seeing it real soon. Uh, I'm sure it's gonna be a great movie. I'm, I'm gonna enjoy it. But change comes.
How about that latest Batman, though? Did you enjoy the, the last Batman?
Oh, with him and Catwoman?
Yeah, him and the Catwoman.
Yeah, I did. I, I, I did like it. It was a little different than the others. Uh, but I, I did enjoy it. I did enjoy it.
Yeah, it was a little different. I had to watch it twice. And when I watched it the second time, I liked it a lot better than the first one. But I'm really into that. My kids, our family, we all into it. All of them except my wife. I be finding out something new about my wife all the time, you know? We were doing softball and we did softball for a good seven, eight years straight. I mean, and we were getting up, going to all these tournaments and everything. And when it was all said and done, she told me, she said, well, I'm so glad that's the way. I used to hate that. And I used to really thought that she enjoyed that with us cuz I used to enjoy it. And I guess I was the only one in the house enjoying it, but nobody else did. But she said she used to hate that. And then we were talking about the Marvel. And I said, hey, you know, Marvel's coming out. You wanna go? And she was like, you know, I really don't like those movies. I go with y'all. I'd be like, man, all this time, we thinking that you like these movies and you hanging out. She just go and she be like, I don't know what's going on. Who's iron, I, I, I'm just there, you know? So i- i- it's funny, you learn something new all the time.
That's funny. My wife, she actually likes the movies. I like comic books, sci-fi, all, all those things.
Right.
She had never seen Star Wars.
Right.
I took her to see Star Wars. She liked, I come home, she's watching Star Wars, Luke Skywalker.
Right.
I'm not even there. She's just watching the rerun on cable. And she watches the Marvel movies. She likes those as well. But there's a thing about marriage. She makes me watch with her black and white movies, you know, the old forty romance and all that, you know? I'm telling you, Pride and Prejudice, all those. And I, I, it just keep it between us, but I kinda like some of them. I don't sit there and watch it all.
If, if I could find one that I could watch. She enforced me to watch that Hallmark channel. And it's, it's Christmas season now. So she watched Christmas movies from now to next Christmas. It never ends, so.
Same here.
Yeah, they, they into that. So let me ask you this. A- a- as it relates to the comics built, you know, the Games of Thrones, you're into that kind of things as well? She did like Game of Thrones since that. Now, it's just really sci-fi. They got this new one came out.
New Game of Thrones?
The new Ga- it's not New Game of Thrones. They did an extension of it, uh, House of Dragons.
Yeah.
And you know, there were some people who were actually complaining about the fact that they said that it was too many black people in the movie. They were indifferent. And I was like, you know, the whole stuff is sci-fi is fairy tale, man. I mean, come on, if you could believe that there's people walking around with pointy ears and dragons, you gonna say a black man shouldn't be in the? How presentant is that, right? That's some presence I just really can't get on, you know? So I, I, I was reading that in the paper as well. But I think those ser- those series are pretty good. I, I got in all that. That's a, so we share some stuff people don't know. I was into that Harry Potter stuff, all of that as well. So I, I, I really enjoyed a lot of sci-fi movies and those things. So we gonna talk some business now. Now, we gonna get down to, we know who you are. We understand what we like and what we do with our free time. So let's talk about county council, man. You became the county council president. How long you been county council president down there?
Two years.
Two years now?
The last two years, I've served as council president. Dan Brady was the previous council president. C. Ellen Connolly was our founding council president. But it's been two years.
So what is the job of a county council president?
Well, I am first among equals. Of, of the eleven of us, I lead our council legislative branch of county government. In like every seventh grade, you know, history government class, they teach you three branches of government. Executive, legislative, and judicial branch. I lead the legislative branch of county government. We make the laws. We write the laws for our governmental jurisdiction. We handle the budget, finances of the county. That is our mandate.
Okay. And, and out of you guys, how many county council members is there?
There are eleven.
Eleven, you guys.
Chi-Hogie County has approximately one point three million people. So you divide those one point three million by eleven. And those are our number of people that we represent. So it's well over a hundred, a hundred ten thousand. Uh, and that neighbor give or take a couple tens or thousands, but yes.
What would you think is the number one function of what you believe county government should be doing for its people?
Oh, well, we have a county charter. And the charter tells us what our mandate is. The county has two functions. That is to improve the economy of our county, improve our economic competitiveness. And the second is to deliver health and human services.
Okay. And when we say health and human services, what are you referring to? What falls under health and human service?
Health and human services means you name a vulnerable population within this county. It's our job to do something to help them with that, that fragile nature. Vulnerable populations are the poor. We oversee all and facilitate the cash assistance. We, we do that. People struggling with drugs and alcohol. We deliver do- dollars to help with those concerns. Those incarcerated, okay? We have to oversee the county jail. But seniors, seniors, it's our job to help them to continue to live independently. But we also have the responsibility of removing individuals from homes if age has become to a point where they cannot live independently.
So what you mean by that?
Okay, there comes a time for every person as they age where they're just not able to take care of themselves, okay? Time does that. You have family. They bring you into the home. That's a good thing. You have your children or those that love you are able to keep you in the home. But if you're living independently, time comes and there is no other recourse. It's our job to help you with that transition.
Get services and things that can help you take care of yourself.
First, to help you stay independent.
Stay independent. And, and not just for seniors, but I imagine people with disabilities as well.
Definitely. Again, a vulnerable population, countless ones. I haven't even begun to name them all.
Right.
But yes, you name it and you can, you'll find the counties engaged in some way. We say we're like an octopus of departments and agencies. Our tentacles run in so many places.
And I guess you guys are the, I don't wanna use the term watchdog, but you also are the people there that keeps the county executive kinda in line in, in regards to the work that they do. Cuz the county executive is actually over those departments and run them. You guys kinda make sure they facilitating those in the right way, correct? So let's talk about the executive a little bit while we on there. How, how was it working with Armin? Armin's on his way out. He's did his thing. You know, I'm a Armin supporter. Without doubt, I think Armin did the best he could in some cases. I think we all fall short. And we all could do better. But for all intents and purposes, I think Armin did the best he could. And if he had much more time, I think he would have completed some of the things he was trying to do. So with that being the case, how was it working with Armin? And what are your thoughts of him leaving out and the way the government is going now?
I'm an Armin supporter. Our destinies were tied to each other. I wanted him to be successful. I want him to be successful. Because we are serving the same community, same constituents, and we have to be partners. Like the next incoming executive, we will have to partner. And with that, I did everything I could to help be successful. He did everything he could do to help me to be successful. And that is our job. And certainly with challenges, challenges. And they're gonna continue to be challenges.
What are some of the challenges you really wish you guys could probably got done?
Well, everything is always an ongoing process. I, I, it's never an arriving. It's never arriving. But I could talk about, one of my pet projects is education. Closing the achievement gap is C T A G, C tag for, for short. It is about helping our children to succeed. Our ninth grade is a target year when our children start to drop out of school. They check out in about the eighth grade, but enough age and size around ninth, where you start to see our children can drop out, get involved in destructive activities. But you want them to stay on the proper course and finish school. As a funeral director, I have seen children, young people who have gotten off the path, uh, buried children who were victims of violence. And sometimes there's drug activity, there's their background, and never finishing high school sometimes is a description. But my goal is to let's help our children stay in school, graduate, have the education they need to be able to make a quality income and live a quality life with constructive opportunities. And, and one way of doing that was for me to bring C tag as initiative to the county and to the edu- educational system, our school systems. So what does that mean? I would provide money to local school systems, Cleveland, Warrensville Heights, Maple Heights, Garfield Heights, Cleveland Heights, gave them money to put a mentor in their high school. And when the mentor was in the high school, he would give, be given a classroom. And they would pull children out, the at-risk youth, cuz we wanna, the at-risk youth, pull them out and start to engage them. Take them on field trips. Take them to colleges to expose them, starting by ninth grade, follow them through four years. Just be a trusted friend to the student, okay? Not the guidance counselor and then nothing parole related or anything. An actual mentor called a linkage coordinator or youth supporter, there's many names for it, but again, a mentor. And with that, we would follow them through four years, ninth through twelve. And after four years, it was my hope to give out proclamations as the kids graduated. But here's what happened. We actually had a graduation class after three years. Three years. And it was a pleasant surprise, unexpected, but a pleasant surprise. Because we targeted the at-risk youth and the kids, or a kid who may have failed a previous grade, or there was some clear issues in the home, whether social issues, emotional issues, dynamics they might have had, where we needed to red flag certain children, ones that were in risk of failing or dropping out. When we targeted them, it appears that after three years, we had a graduation class, not four years, but three years. And the reason being, because they were at risk and some had maybe failed an earlier grade, when we engaged them with our work, we helped them recover their po- proper school credit. And then they graduated on time.
Okay.
So three years into my C tag initiative, we had a graduation class. Thirty-three kids out of about three hundred that we engaged graduated on time. And I said, oh, this is huge. I said, we are helping children who might not have made it to make it.
You know, one of the things I know they were talking about was trying to get more training and more skills training in schools and that kind of thing. It would be nice to see if the county can kinda work to try to do more about that. I think we need more, um, programs to teach kids who don't wanna go to college, where they can do to learn to be electrician, plumbers, and that kind of thing. Most of those programs are just not close by, you know? One of the things, I've been working in the work, the workforce development field for a few years with Ohio Means Jobs and others. And it seems like we're doing this kinda backwards. And what I mean by that is everything you're saying is totally correct. Because those thirty-three kids that you talked about, chances are, you probably get less than half of them gonna even go take the next step to go to college. But that doesn't mean that they don't wanna work. It doesn't necessarily mean they don't wanna be entrepreneurs or open up their own businesses or something like that. And I think where we're falling kinda short at is that we're getting to just to a certain point and we're just dropping off. And we're not, it, there's no help for the people in between. Either you gotta be a senior for me to help you, or you gotta be really destitute for me to help you. But if you're in the middle, at which there's a lot of them that's in the middle, there's no help. And I think that's where the county may be falling a little short at, you know?
And again, it's always about helping vulnerable populations. These children are a vulnerable population.
Right.
So we laser focus what we do, uh, into the school system. We aren't in charge of the school. We don't run the school. But we are support. And it has tangible and measurable results cuz you're serving children that are in the school. Where the impact you have shows up in the forms of grades, graduation. In fact, we had metrics. The, with the work we had done when we studied it, we were increasing attendance. And we are, were increasing graduation. We were also reducing suspensions and reducing dropouts. Those are hard metrics that show best practice of what we were doing. Now, if there is a window of, of individuals who are not helping, then it's time to address it. We go and look and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Those things we, we're supposed to constantly look for.
We know that because we got the situation and we go into that with Jane Anna Hunter. And, and the fact that, you know, we have these foster kids that are falling out. And, and from my research of talking with a few people, these are not necessarily kids that belong over in the juvenile detention center. These are just kids that may have not felt well with a foster parent or someone that they're supposed to be going with. And there's a in-between where these folks are being caught. So for the people who don't know, what's going on at Jane Anna Hunter? Where they on the news saying that they got these kids out there fighting the folk? They got people living in the hallways and that kind? How much of that is true? How much of it is a myth? What is the deal with that?
Okay, so for anyone who may not know, Jane Edna Hunter is a county building. It's an office building. And our, another vulnerable population are our children who are victims of abuse and neglect. And again, just like with seniors, we look at with children. And social workers go into homes and evaluate. And if children are being abused or neglected, then the county removes the children from the home. They'll take them to Metro. They'll take them to Metro to be able to fancy wear triage, to be looked over, make sure everything is all right with them. And then the goal is to place them. They are our children at that moment. They are my children, okay? And we have to place them, ideally with grandparent, a family member or foster parent. Or, or provide the help to the parents, existing parents, and hopefully there's a reunification. All of these are the desired outcomes, but then there are times when they're, they're, that doesn't happen, okay? And, and we have to take care of them, okay? But there is a process. Once they are removed from the home, once they're triaged at Metro Health, where do they go next? And they have been going to Jane Edna Hunter, an office building. That in itself is problematic. It's an office building. I've toured and I've seen it, okay? That, that is a problem.
It's an office building.
It is. But here's what happens. You remove children that are babies to seventeen years old and maybe some even older. The babies are easier to place, you'd think. As you start to get older, the placing of the others take a little longer. Doesn't happen in just 12 hours. Or as you pass through Jane Adda Hunter, or 24 hours, sometimes it takes longer to place them. And these children have been abused and neglected. Hurt people hurt people. Children are to be seen as human beings, as they have gone through challenges in life. And it causes the time for placement to be longer. And while they're in the office building, then things have happened. You've seen it on the news. Those things that have been well documented on the news, the harm that it's done to other social workers and individuals that were there. It is something that we have been working on diligently now. I'm going to go back. There was a Catholic institution called Parmadale. When there were difficult children. And that's where they went.
And with Madison Bond was another one.
Parmadale was probably that ideal loc- back then, but even in the ideal case, it was difficult. They got bad press when, when hurt people who hurt people created a dynamic, okay? And then it, it hits the paper and the county would take the, or the Parmadale would take, not the county, but Parmadale would take the brunt of the news. And I can't speak to it because I wasn't there, but they ended up leaving the industry. And when they did, now we have children trying to figure out where they go.
So they, when they left, that, that was devoid. It, it, nothing else ever, nothing ever filled in.
There were other contracts given, but they would have caveats. Well, we're not going to take these kids. We'll take these, but we won't take these kids. So now, these kids that are not being taken are the ones who need the most help. And those are the ones that we're looking to serve, all right? So as I envision, see, I'm the legislative branch. The executive has to execute and I have to provide the money, make laws as necessary and budget all those things. But we're all in it together. And how do you, here's my vision, or as we've talked, not just my vision, others. It should be more of a residential setting, more home setting. When you make them from the home, they shouldn't be placed in an office building. They should feel like they're coming somewhere where someone cares. Okay, because they've already been through so much. An office building with your things placed along the wall, your personal possession, that's obviously not, not conducive. A home setting where you wrap services around the child, the help will just like with the children in C tag. You know, bring resources to them while for the time that you have them before you put, before they are placed. These are the conversations we're having, working with con- vendors and contractors who can deliver that type of service to them. And there are those that we're talking with, trying to find that right mix, because it's going to be outside the box thinking from what has been done in the past. And create that environment. Right now, we are creating contracts right now to place the children. Temporary until we can find and create the ideal scenario. Again, for me, is one where you receive the children into a residential type environment. They have a place to rest their head, to be wrapped the proper services around them. Until we can place them in an ideal setting of reunification with parents if possible, or with family members or adopted foster care.
And that, and that makes sense. That leaves us over and we'll just keep flowing over into the jail. Just this week, I believe, or last week, they said there were two more people who died in the jail over there. A female, a woman was found dead and another gentleman, I guess they took to the hospital and was pronounced dead when he got there. And we both was working on initiative to try to get a new county jail built and that kind of thing. And we know that all got pulled to a halt. Don't want us to get into a pointing finger thing because it's over with at this point. But let's really talk about though, the situation of the jail. Let's talk about what's going on down there. Let's talk about where we think the future may go with that. So first of all, with the two people that died in there recently, Purnell, what's been going on with that? You could say legally, I know those are ongoing investigations probably at this point, but can you tell us know what was going on with that or any news?
I'm aware, just as you are, I was notified of the passings when they happened, but right now I don't know too much. I've not been fully briefed on what happened. And so I, not much I can say about those cases or that I would desire to say too much about them at this moment. We could talk in general about some other things, but I can't at this moment get into the details of those two cases.
So in your knowledge of dealing with the jail, one of the things we did talk about going through that process was the need for, I had Chris Ronaine on the show and I told Chris, I don't believe that we should allow a group of people to change the narrative of what happened. I hate to say if there were winners and losers, but I felt like we lost because we let them change the narrative. And this is what I mean by change the narrative. I said, we took a piece of land that a gentleman has been having his business on there for years. Running a business day to day. It's been people working there, doing their job, doing what they need to do. And we took that to saying that his land is toxic and is filthy and it's so bad that nobody should even be on there. Which left him open for all kinds of lawsuits or anything else that can come from any of his employees or anybody else over there, for just words that came from some people who had nothing to bag on. When you had all the other evidence and everything else that said otherwise. I said, that was one thing that I really just didn't think that we did well enough. You know, you shouldn't let people scare that. And I just think that was terrible that they did that. I mean, now you could say we don't like the location. You can say that we think we ought to go to a better location, but to label it just a nasty, toxic facility that no one should be on, it was ludicrous. And I was very surprised. The other thing that surprised me was that the county prosecutor and the administrative judge and the county DA all felt that bail reform is the answer. And that somehow or another, we did more with bail reform and that kind of thing that we can reduce people out. But it's like, hell, if y'all wanted to do something with that, y'all can do something about that, like right this moment without us having to go through all of that. You know, prosecutor, quit asking them to throw the book at the kid who just stole a pack of bubble gum. And pro- judge, quit telling your judges to sending that kid to jail for stealing a pack of bubble gum. And do a better job of defending and quit letting everybody plea out on these crazy ass sentences y'all giving everybody. It's real easy that we can do to do it. But I saw when Armin even actually put that on the table, Brandon Sheehan came out and said, hey, you know, everybody in jail deserves to be in jail. So, you know, it just seemed like, man, your hands are full in these type of situations, man. So how you feel you gonna get through all of this?
Yeah. Well, first I'll start with the tail end, because I can remember what you said last, easiest, but let's remember this about the county jail. The individuals there are by the letter of the law innocent. And that's one narrative we need to say. The majority of people there are people of color. There's a significant African-American population in that jail, but by the letter of the law, you were innocent until you've had your day in court, not a prison.
It's a jail, correct.
Just think of Andy Griffith, county of Mayberry, he had a county jail. And him and Otis, and Otis needed a place to stay at night, you know? And waiting on to whether Otis got to see a judge or not. He wasn't guilty. He was just being held. He had been arrested. He was being held. Okay, so that is the county jail, okay? Innocent by the letter of the law, despite whatever, until you have had your day in court. So the idea of deaths in the jail, we should all be offended by that, okay? Let me tell you my responsibility. My responsibility is to take care of those in custody within the county jail, county executive, county council, myself and my colleagues, the sheriff. We are the ones are responsible for those that we hold in custody, okay? We have to be good managers, okay? So we are responsible for the management of what happens within that jail. But what we do not control is who is in there and how many people are placed into the jail. We do not control that flow, as you've already expressed, the prosecutor, the judges across Cuyahoga County, at the city municipal levels of the 59 cities that make up Cuyahoga County, and the county judges, so to speak, common police courts, all of those. They are the ones who will determine who is being sent to the jail. I must serve and protect those who are in that jail. That is the responsibility of myself. So there is a distinction. So knowing that, building a new jail was, in my estimation, the appropriate thing to do. Because the facility that we currently have is not as humane as it should be. We have to create a facility that is much more humane. I, I'll give you an example. When I say humane, here's a few examples. I've visited the Franklin County Jail. They built a brand new facility in Columbus, Franklin County. And it goes online early next year. So I've toured it while it's still, you know, brand new, okay? One of the things they have are zero blind spots. So here's the importance of a zero blind spot. What that means is cameras everywhere and see every element, every part of the jail. We spent nearly $2 million in recent years to try to eliminate blind spots. And we still have blind spots. But here's what happens. Court cases come and all those things, and you don't see it on tape. You don't catch everything on tape. Some things you may, some things you don't. But if things are happening in blind spots, it becomes a he say, she say. And it just happened in the first place. Some things don't happen when there are cameras on. So it causes conformity. Everything is under a camera. If there is no conformity, then you got it on tape. So now that is one small element, natural light. We're talking about having natural light in a new facility that's not a vertical skyscraper of a justice center, but a two-level facility. And natural light into the pod area of where people are being held. And here's what's important about natural light. You get to actually see whether it's day or night. In the county jail, the lights are never turned off. They're always on. So when you look up, you get to see the darkness. There in Franklin County, they have clocks everywhere, little red digital clocks everywhere. So you know what time it is. You, you envision when the arresting officer brings them in and drops them off and turns them over at the county, at the justice center. That person is in an anxious moment, anxiety, because they don't know what's going to happen or what's going to happen to them next. So they have focused on anything and everything, every step of the way, that helps bring the anxiety down in that person. That can help change so much of the dynamics. When you have built the facility that has thought about every step of the way, the process of them being brought in and administered in and ultimately placed in their cell until the day they are let out.
So with that, your new county executive coming in, any words of wisdom you got for the new county executive?
Well, we're going to build the jail. We're going to do it together. I met with Chris Ronaine and we have talked about partnering and going to visit other jails together so that we can see it done the right way. See, all I've had is 11 years of experience in a county jail and time officer and county government. And I've only known how to do it one way. Active, actually going to another facility gave me an entirely different perspective. And I'd like to, for the new executive, have that same opportunity. And we've already agreed to go together and look and see, because there is going to be a jail. There needs to be one. The professionals have told us we have five to eight years of life left in the building. It is not ADA accessible. All of these things and things that have to change. It's like when the professionals have said to us, the experts, that the age of this building and the repairs that, that will be needed, it's like having an old car. And going to the mechanic and he gives you a laundry list of things that need to be fixed. And you say, man, I could buy, I didn't even tell you the cost. You say, I could buy a new car for that, you know? That is where we are when the professional said it's time to replace this building. It's time to replace this building.
Well, Councilman, I want to thank you for coming on our show, man. Time went really quick, man. But before you go, I'm going to give you this camera right here. If you want to let the world know about anything that's on your mind or something you might want to say out to people to bring them aware of anything that's going on in your district or something, by all means, it's yours.
Oh, well, one, just keep voting. Voting at this time is critical. If you're registered to vote, if you're not registered, get registered. Sign up right now. Get registered and cast your vote. Your ability to vote is our ability to speak and let those in elected office know what we need from them. Your voice is heard in that. So it's critical that we speak. And myself as an elected official, I am happy to serve, to continue to serve. I'm elected by those who live in Cuyahoga County District Eight, which means the central community where I live. The good east side of Cleveland, the southeast side of Cleveland, from Euclid Avenue one south into cities like Newburgh Heights, Cuyahoga Heights, Garfield Heights and Maple Heights. I served the bulk of public housing right there, 55th and Woodland. So that, those are those who elect me. But again, I serve all of Cuyahoga. And how you can reach me, 216-640-6287 is my phone number. You can give us a call if you have any concerns. I try to pick up my phone when I can. If not, the staff will grab it for me. But if I can be of service, just call me.
Thanks, Councilman. We appreciate you being on our show and we look forward to seeing you. We see you on our next show. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken.